Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Karen Wetzel, Chairman of the Shenandoah County School Board. And Board members, as we proceed, it would be very helpful if you make a motion or second a motion, or if you speak, if you'll state your name just to help the clerk get the minutes. Now, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented, Cindy Walsh.
Is there a second?
Second, Michelle Manning.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The motion carries. The agenda is approved. The next thing on the agenda is the Budget Work Session, and I will turn the proceedings over to Dr. Johnston.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks. So before I start talking about the FY21 budget, I just wanted to share a couple of things about the current closeout for the fiscal year, which takes us through June 30th of 2020, and then looking ahead for 2020-21 to kind of set the stage a little bit. So a couple of things I wanted to share with you, and I'll share these numbers with you in just a moment. But this is a very different time for school budgets, as it is a different time for so many things. And one of the great uncertainties in this budget that we've never really had to address before is that the budget is based on projected revenues that we are concerned about whether or not they will come in as projected. For example, approximately 18% of our budget is state sales tax revenue. That's about $7.5 million. So if sales tax revenue came in at 50% of what it's projected at, then we would need to identify $3.85 million, $7.5 million in reductions in order to balance at the end of the year. So what we're doing already is being very methodical and about reviewing any new positions, or any vacancies, I should say. So a good example is, given the closure that we had, if for whatever reason schools were not open on time in August, we want to be prepared for that. So some positions, we're going to hold on until we know that we're okay to move forward. And I mean, those are current budgeted positions, not any new positions. So for example, if I had an attendance clerk who's a paraprofessional, who was to resign, what we would likely do is to hold that position vacant until we know we're going to need that attendance person. And doesn't mean we won't fill the position. It just means that, once we know schools are going to open and we're going to be doing attendance in the traditional ways we've done in the past, then we would move forward in filling that position. Teacher positions, we would continue to move forward on because we know that we can't hold off on those positions because we're in deep competition with peers. So for example, if I had a Math VII teacher who resigned, we would move forward in filling that Math VII position so we can open school in the fall with that staffed. I can't find a Math VII teacher the first day of school and expect everything to go well. So we are reviewing all positions on a weekly basis, authorizing the filling of select ones based on that. So I wanted to let you know that. The second thing I wanted to let you know is that also where we have classes being taught outside the current instructional day. So for example, we have some classes that are taught early morning that if we do not open in the fall, then those classes may not happen. If that were to be the case, we don't want to issue a contract to somebody for an extra period until we know that's going to be needed. It doesn't mean the person won't receive that contract. It just means we're going to wait a little bit of time to be sure before we issue it. Since these are full-time teachers who take on extra duties and teach outside the school day, we just want to make sure that we're being as fiscally responsible as possible. So again, if we know that class is going to make up, once we know that, and once we know our timelines, then we move forward with issuing that contract for the extra period. Do you have any questions about any of that? Okay. So the first thing I'd like to ask Tracy if she would do is I'd like her to share with everyone the revenue summary. This is a very busy sheet. It is available in your Board Docs. And what I'd like to do is ask Trace if she'd go down to the line that says "at risk." It's about 2/3 of the way down from the, in the first section of numbers, and just highlight state sales tax, I'm sorry, at risk, which is $452,352 in 1819. Okay, can you highlight those numbers? Okay. I'm not sure that I see the highlighting, but it is in your Board Docs documents. Again, it, and it's something we chatted about a little bit earlier. But you'll notice when you look at at risk, the budget this past year was $452,352. The state has increased that this year to $916,874, which is an increase of $376,440. So I wanted to point out that the state remains committed to the at-risk add-on. And that's an increase that's responsive to the issues we've been talking about for the last year more around our social-emotional learning, things that help students who are at risk. At-risk is typically defined as students who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunch. It's the way that we go about funding remediation programs, support for students, and so on. So I wanted to note that in the state's final budget, that that remained a high priority for the state. The second thing I wanted to note is if you go down just a little further, you'll see the state sales tax number, and this is what I was talking about a little bit earlier. The state sales tax revenue, we get, that state sales tax lags two months. So when the state makes its collections, it takes two months for those collections to reach us. So there's a two-month delay. So the state's sales taxes from mid-April actually were generated in mid-February before the pandemic. The state's sales taxes in mid-May will represent mid-March. And so what we anticipate to start seeing is a reduction in those. The state has no way to make a projection. No one has a way to make a projection. I would point out that in the current conditions, some businesses, particularly those in home improvement and things like that, are booming. Other businesses are shuttered and are not bringing any tax revenues into the state. So the state, with its inability to budget for that, you'll notice here, last year, we were budgeted $6.885,667, or $6.8 million, $6.9 million. This year, the state is projecting $7.582,908. We know that number is not real. We just don't know what it's going to be in the end. So that's one big uncertainty. Another big uncertainty is lottery revenues. And so when you look down your funding list and you look at lottery revenues, so supplemental lottery per pupil allocation, you'll notice that last year was $1,216,410. That is projected to be this year $1,311,713. So the state projected a small decrease over what was budgeted this year, but it's still over $1 million. In March of this year, state lottery proceeds were 28% lower than March of 19. So we remain worried about that number as well. So the two big uncertainties in this budget, our revenue picture, are state sales taxes and lottery funds. So essentially, what I'm recommending to you is that we take the original budget that you proposed, we make adjustments to it so that we're balanced, but then we hold off on those expenditures, most of those expenditures, other than any that would be required, until we know what our revenue picture is. So for example, and I'll get into this in more detail, if there were any new positions to be added, we would not hire for those positions. We would leave them vacant so that we have that revenue to return should the sales tax revenues come in below projections, which we're almost certain they will, and our lottery revenues come in below projections, which they almost certainly will. The one caveat I'd like to offer is that with lottery funds, there is a provision in state code that says they would be backfilled by other general fund revenue. We don't know what kind of position Virginia is going to be in economically in terms of revenue, so we're watching that number as well. I also wanted to add that I've talked with some other superintendents in both Region 4 and Region 5. And the general feedback I've gotten is that we're all kind of following a similar approach in our recommendations to the board. So if you scroll down under Total State Funds, you'll note that the projected state increase, and if Tracy, if you would scroll that document down, a little lower. It seems not showing up on my screen. Can you all see this document at the bottom?
It's very small.
But it is, that Total State Funds on mine. But I've got my Board Docs up, Avril, on another device here.
Yeah, so if you're unable to see that well, I'm going to summarize it verbally. I have the Board Docs item open. I have a hard copy of it as well. But essentially, what the state has projected for us, based on all the changes, based on the standards of quality formulas, based on the re-benchmarking that was done, based on sales tax projections to hold steady, based on lottery funds to be what they are, the state has estimated that we should see an increase in state revenue of $1,833,120. I am wary to spend that, and I would recommend that you should be as well. So while it's nice to see an increase in state revenue, the question is, will that state revenue actually hold? And without the certainty that it will, I think we should hold steady in moving forward with anything that would be considered new. Moving down, the federal funds are overall the same as they were the previous year. The local funds would increase, the county in their approved budget increased the local revenue by $384,210 to schools. And the reason that occurred was because that is an expenditure we have no choice in. That is our VRS rate increase, the cost of the VRS rate increase. So I want to acknowledge and say how much I appreciate the county stepping up. So as they funded the increase in health insurance premiums for the county employees, so too, they funded our increase in VRS, which is not something we have a choice in. Fortunately, our health insurance rates had no increase, and so that was flat. So that was good news this year in health insurance rates. So the total revenue picture is that our total operating revenue would be $71 million, I'm sorry, $72,684,097. Last year, that was $71,417,229, for an increase of 1.77%. And I apologize, that also includes capital as well. And I do want to note, in that document, just up from the bottom, under Shenandoah County appropriation, notice the capital projects appropriation is zeroed out. So while it was $1 million this past year, that is $0 for next year. So I want to mention how we plan to budget in that category. We have a revenue balance or a fund balance from FY19. So at the end of last year, once the auditors go through our books, verify all the revenues and expenditures, we have a fund balance. It's illegal to have a negative fund balance. So we had a positive fund balance, and I'm going to get to that in a little while. But that fund balance was $260,260... Hold on. I don't have that number memorized. It's $220,666. So $220,666. So if the county approves reallocation of our fund balance, that line would be $226,000... And I'll review that in more detail in a little bit. We have a budget, we have an agenda item that seeks your approval for me to request that fund balance from the county. So we'll get to that a little bit later in our agenda. The other thing I want to give a nod to, and I'll go into this in more detail, the other revenue that we might be able to apply to capital would be the federal stimulus money. That's the CARES Act money. We've been given a projection of what that will be. We don't know with certainty because there is a set aside for private schools and independent schools. And so I don't have that figured yet, but we know what the total amount will be. And so some of that money may very well be used to support capital projects. I'll give you a good example. I'll give you an example that might help make this make sense to you is if you think about our cafeterias and food service. Right now, when students go through a lunch line, they push a keypad with their student number, their ID number, and then those funds are removed from their account. Given the situation we're in, we're looking to probably having to replace those keypads since we don't want kids touching devices one after the other. So we probably, so the cost of that replacement would be something CARES Act money could be used for. It's a one-time expense. The expense is made. We don't need to, it doesn't load up our operational budget. But there will be things we're going to be looking at in our CIP program that might similarly be supported through stimulus money. So while it looks very bad in terms of capital funds, we have a plan for how to address some of that. Of course, it won't be the same as if we had the $1 million. And you'll remember, we had $5.2 million in capital needs. So again, it's, it is what it is, I guess is the best I can say about that. Questions about revenue picture? Kind of the basis for the strategy? Where, you know, how we're looking at revenue? So that then when we look at where we're suggesting those expenditures be, we know how we're paying for them. Do you have any questions about that?
So the sales tax, we won't know for the, this current school year till, let's see, the calendar year ends June 30th? We won't know that until two months after that?
We won't know, we won't know the June sales tax revenues until August. We'll know, we'll start to see, we'll be able to know kind of what happened in mid-March when things began to shut down. We'll see the first impacts of that in mid-March, which is why we're taking, we've halted all discretionary spending at the end of the year. We're holding back on purchases at the end of the year in case we have to fill a budget gap at the end of this year. And then we'll know from mid-April and mid-June. So we'll start to see what that trend looks like. The state will then likely, at some point in time, revise their sales tax projections and begin to lower the revenue we're receiving. And we'll start to see that. But again, by having, by not expending those funds, we'll have the funds available to backfill any holes that might be created. So we're taking care of the end of this fiscal year by going through and stopping discretionary spending or limiting it, watching it very carefully. For example, the only accounts payable or the only purchase orders we're processing right now are things that are required for custodians so that we can remain clean. We can clean up with the childcare programs, things that we have to do now to get us to June 30. Other discretionary funds, like any purchases of computers, things like that, we're not making right now until we begin to see that revenue so that we end up the fiscal year in good shape.
The lottery is more current, it's not two months?
The lottery is more current. The thing about the lottery is the provisions in the state code, if there's a drop in lottery funds, they are supposed to be backfilled by basic aid from the state. So if lottery funds drop for us, the state fills that hole with other funds. The question will be, is that, is that something they're going to be able to sustain next year? And we just don't know. But we're preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. The other thing, just so you know, I found interesting about the lottery funds, the decrease is not economic. It's because of competition from the games of chance. And if you'll recall, the governor put a proposal in to begin to collect tax on games of chance, permit those. And that had generated some projected revenue for us, but that was pulled back off. That was on the order, it was on some projections sheets I saw earlier. That was projected... Yeah, we were, we were supposed to receive $250,696, but that got canceled. So again, I found that interesting that it, because I thought maybe that drop was economic. But in fact, it's those games of chance that are now competing with lottery for people who participate in those activities.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions about revenue? All right, the next document I'd like to ask Tracy to pull up, if she would, is the special budgets. Again, I know that document is small, but... And I've lost that on my screen. So Tracy, can you pull up that special budgets? There you go, thank you. So for Mr. Keller and Mr. Helsley, who are new to the board, there are certain allocations we receive... No, that's not the one, Tracy, I'm sorry. It's the one that says "special budget."
Right, I have it, I have it. Special budget, okay, special. There we go, okay.
I think you had it the first time. There you go. So I think most of you are familiar with the Starnes Estate, the Beginning Teacher Recognition, STEM Initiative. These are various grants that we receive from the state for specific purposes. Governor's School, Medicaid, Title I. These are not discretionary accounts. These are accounts that are funded for specific purposes. So they are budgeted into a series of line items called the special budget or special grants budget. And this just, this sheet shows you kind of how those change over time. But what typically happens is when you approve your budget, we include those special grants, and then the county simply approves the reallocation of those because there would be no point in the county saying, "Well, we're not, we're not going to give you the Title I money." Well, the county can't use Title I money. It has to be used for Title I purposes. So they reallocate that to us. And we watch that over time. The reason I wanted to show you this, just so you would certainly know that, but the one thing I wanted to show you that's new here is the very last numbered line, 919, which is the CARES Act money. That is our stimulus money from the CARES Act, the federal stimulus money. For Shenandoah County Public Schools, it's based on a Title I formula, although it's not limited to Title I expenditures. But those CARES Act funds came in at $965,090. And so what we have to do is develop a plan for the expenditure of those, submit that plan to the state. The state approves that plan, and then we can begin those expenditures. And just a few details on them. We expend them, it's retroactive to March 13th, the start of the effects of the pandemic on us, our budget. And we can spend those funds through September of 2022.
Can those funds be taken care of the loss of revenue from sales tax?
It depends, it depends. For example, let's say that... Oh, let me think of something here. Let's say that... Well, first, they would be for one-time things because if I, if I, if we use those to replace a loss of sales tax, and let's say we bought a, we paid for a position, so now we're committed to salary. When those funds go away, the lottery funds may not come back, and then we have to reduce force and so on. So some things could. For example, let's say it was a one-time, like... Well, let's say, for example, it was the routing software that's in our, that'll be in our budget proposal. If, that would be a one-time expenditure perhaps. And so it could be that that might backfill that and take the load off of the operational budget. So we'll just have to go through. But basically, I can tell you right now, I had to order disposable masks for staff. So I've already encumbered $2,000 for disposable masks. We're looking at costs of hand sanitizer, special cleaning materials, you know, those kinds of things. Again, we've not submitted any plan yet to the state, but that's the kind of conversation we're beginning to have. And staff is meeting next week to begin to pull together that plan.
That's right.
So those funds go to Richmond first and then allocated to each county?
Yes, they went to Richmond, and then Richmond has them ready for us as soon as we submit our plan and have it approved by the state.
Thank you.
So when you look at the grand total of special budgets, you'll see that it increased by $698,421. The majority of that was the CARES Act funds. The line below that is our food service, which again is a separate fund. And the food service line always gets included separately. So our total for all of our special budgets is $6,902,051. And again, that does include the cafeteria, food service fund, which in Shenandoah County Public Schools is a self-sufficient fund. The revenues keep that fund running in the, keep that program running in the black. We do not use operational money to subsidize it. I know in some school divisions, it's subsidized by operational money. We don't, we don't have to do that because we have a very lean and well-run program, so we're fortunate.
Is the cafeteria budget, since it stopped serving in-building on March 13th, and now we're serving them, are we saving money there?
We're not saving money because we have costs associated with labor and with food purchases, but it's paying for itself. So we're not making revenue, but we're not losing revenue either. So we're just kind of in a holding pattern.
Just curious?
Yeah.
Do we have to, when we submit for the CARES Act to Richmond, do we have to account for every dollar in that submission? Like how we're going to spend every dollar of that?
Yes. Although, the way it typically works is you submit a budget with categories of expenditures, and if some of those things are... and expenditures, and if some of those things are over expended, then you make budget adjustments and then amendments, and then you submit that to the state. They have to approve those amendments. It's a fairly routine process. It works very similar to the Title I budget, the Perkins budget. For example, within Perkins, you know, you submit a plan, and let's say you were going to buy, furnish a computer lab, and that lab didn't, you know, say it was $10,000 cheaper than you thought it was going to be. You can reallocate that $10,000 to another Perkins initiative. State has to approve it, you have to file the amendments, but it's a fairly routine process. So the total expenditures we have through September of 2022 to make those expenditures, and then by November of 2022 to submit the reimbursements, and then that goes away. That's why, you know, for that fund, those will be one-time expenditures and in accordance with the requirements of CARES Act, which again, like I said, will be, you know, we've not been in the business to buy large amounts of personal protective equipment or hand sanitizer or specialized cleaning supplies and so on. While we have, you know, sanitary supplies and so on, you know, we're going to make, we need to make sure that we have the right kind, that we have the right materials and so on. But the bottom.
Did you assign to oversee the CARE Act?
Well, it'll be, right now, in the Federal Grants Office. So in the Federal Grants Office, and then that will include strong components from finance, instruction, maintenance, and so we're working on that as a team across divisions, student services, all of that. For example, if we were to have to open school in the fall with students wearing face masks, we've got to purchase them, and that would be the source of revenue. So while that looks like a pretty big chunk of money, it may not really go very far when you think about equipping perhaps as many as close to 6,000 students with face masks.
And staff.
And staff.
When is that plan due to the state?
I believe that, I haven't seen the hard deadline on it. I've not gotten the paperwork yet. They're still getting the details around the submission. But, you know, my goal would be to get it approved as soon as possible because I do have some expenditures that we've made this year in response to the COVID-19 that I can backfill. So like, for example, I bought masks today, that would be an expenditure that I could use those funds to cover, so it wouldn't come out of our operational budget.
And I think would that, would that plan come to the school board for approval, or will that be an administrative plan directly from the SBO?
It would be, it's an administrative plan that only requires approval with the state. We would certainly bring that forward to you so that you would be aware of what we were expending those funds on, but it does not require school board approval.
And I believe you, you said that some of those funds could. Little improvement products, projects, but they're very specific, is that?
Yeah, they're very specific. They would be things that would be one-time expenditures. You know, also think about this, you know, if we have to sanitize our school buses, you know, how do we do that? Those are likely going to be some things that would encumber us. But like I said, you know, like the pen pads in the cafeterias, even though that's food services, it might be something that we would want to supplement with stimulus money since that's what the stimulus money is for, those kinds of things.
And could that money be used for Wi-Fi hotspots or?
Yes.
Other technology internet?
Yeah, so for example, right now, we just worked on a grant project with the Rotary to construct at least one and perhaps more mobile hotspots that can be placed in remote parts of the county. We've been in contact with Chantel, our local service provider. Rotary would contribute some, we would contribute some to create that kind of access. That's, that's an excellent example.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, another one, another good example is we're pricing what it costs to make hotspots outside of our schools. So we're looking at all three campuses so that students can have access in parking lots. So we're looking at Stonewall Jackson, Central High School, Signal Lot Middle School. Preliminary estimates are on the order of $32,000 for that expansion. So at least we could provide access to students if schools were closed or were to remain closed. So that would be the kind, that would be exactly the kind of thing those stimulus funds are for.
Okay.
Any other questions about the special project, special grants budget? And it's a fairly, Karen or Ms. Wetzel, you have more experience than I do, but I'm not aware of a time when it was a, it was a debate with the county board of whether that was approved or not. That's a fairly routine approval since, like I said, it would not behoove the county.
They can't use, we have to just not get it.
Yeah, and there are no matches on it or anything like that, other than what we already have in our operational budget.
And actually, some of the expenditures could benefit the whole community, just like the hotspot you talked about.
Yeah. All right, so if there are no more questions there, I'm going to have plenty, I want to use wait time. So. All right, so the next item I'd like, I'm not going to have Tracy pull up the expenditure summary. It is a multi-page document. I guess it's like one, it's about four or five pages. I actually, I don't think you're going to be able to see it, but I guess I will ask Tracy to pull that up, but what I need is just the last page to show on the screen. Are you able to show the last page of that, Tracy?
Yes, sir.
So I don't see it on my screen, Tracy, but that, that's okay. What I was just going to do there was summarize for you. The total operating budget, again, 72, what was budgeted this current year was $70,164,593. The 2021 proposed budget, this is based on the additional $1,833,000 in state revenue plus the 364,000 for VRS from the county, which represents a 3.16% increase. But as I've noted, approximately seven and a half million of that is sales tax revenue. And we know that number is not going to be 7.5 million. The overall budget, when we look at capital projects and so on, comes in at a 1.77% increase, and that's because of the reduction in the capital improvement budget. So we're not showing the $220,000, $220,666 that we're requesting to be reallocated to us because that's not happened yet. So if that is reallocated, there you go. Thank you, Tracy. So what I was going over was the blue line there and then down below. One thing I did want to point out to you, under county technology services, you'll see what appears to be an increase there of $49,538. The reason that's an increase is, if you remember last year, when we took over the county's technology services, we added a technician and a clerical position, and those were based on estimates. Now that we have incumbents in those positions, we've trued up those budget numbers. So it's not, it's not really an increase, it's just showing the actual expenditures based on projections versus what was last year, just merely a projection. So again, you'll see an overall increase in budget of 1.77%, and that's operations and CIP. So kind of looking ahead, if our sales tax revenues come in lower, we may actually see, if, for example, if sales tax revenues were to decrease $1.266 million, we will be in a flat budget or level funded from the previous year. So that's kind of the magnitude of what we're talking about there. Any questions on that? Again, that's a little bit.
Sales tax goes under that, so it could be, we may have to make revisions, cut more so.
So in the past, when things like that happened, I think you might remember this, Mr. Helsley, for example, our supply budgets, we release 65% at the beginning of the year. We hold 35% until February. It may be that we hold that additional 35% to make up a shortfall. It's just, it's on the fly, you know. A couple years ago, when our ADM came in low, lower than projected, the whole supply budget was held. Then as the school year continued on, the picture got better, and so those supply budgets began to be released so people could fill or could, could go ahead and purchase again. A couple years ago, I want to say four years ago, I think it was my first year superintendent, the state had prom, had committed money for a raise effective October 1st. Well, our fiscal year is July 1st, so we, along with probably every other school division in the state, went ahead and gave the raise July 1st. When October arrived, the state said, oops, we don't have the money, and so we had to make up a deficit of $484,000. So again, that's what we would have to do is find that in our budget where we have discretion. If we can't find it there, then we would actually be talking about layoffs and things like that, although I would think before we would do that, we would probably want to look at the use of that stimulus money.
What's the savings on fuel costs and electricity since the, we shut down March 13th?
I don't have an exact number for you.
Approximately.
Yeah, I don't even have an approximate. One of the problems I have is that our fuel accounts last year were over expended, meaning we spent more than what was allocated, and so we had to cover those with some other overages. So right now, I don't have a good number for you. We will have that certainly as time goes on, I just don't have a good one for you now. Same thing's true with, with electricity and such. Even water, we should have savings on as well. It's just that those will roll in a little bit later. So I don't have.
Okay, thank you.
Another area where we'll have some savings is substitute costs. Because we're not hiring, we're not paying for substitute teachers other than long-term subs, which, who are filling in for their, for teachers that are out on leave. Go ahead.
Anything else for us under the work session?
Yeah, I have one more, I just want to now go down through the revised priorities. So Tracy, if you could bring up the revised priorities. Thank you. And I know this is very hard to see, perhaps if you have a hard copy or a board docs, but I wanted to just go down and, and again, what I want to reiterate is if this is the original budget you approved earlier this year based on an estimate of what we were going to receive in state and local revenues. As we know, those revenues are far reduced from what this budget was built upon, so we need to make some reductions. The other thing I want to say to you is this, anything that is new here, we will not move on. We will just hold in abeyance until we know what our revenue picture is. And I don't mean projection, I mean real. So if sales tax revenues start coming in, say 20% below projections, then we're going to make sure that our budget balances and that we spend 20% under sales tax projections, watching, of course, all the other accounts as well. So what I'm recommending is that we retain in the budget the positions at North Fork and Stonewall Jackson, those were classroom teachers. We retain, but we not fill them right now. We retain those monies that were set aside for stipends, but we not encumber those funds yet. On the counselor positions, the additional counselor positions, that was one of the things the state cut. So they took away any funding towards school counselors and new counselors. They put the ratios for elementary back to 1 to 475. That's much better, Tracy, thank you. They put those back to 1 to 475 for elementary, 1 to 375 for middle, and 1 to 325 for high school, and we meet those projections. The state pulled back any revenue they were going to give for that, so I'm suggesting we not include those at this time so our budget is balanced. Moving down, we have the student support specialists. We talked at length about what those positions were for. They are not, we would not fill those positions. So in other words, we would be saying that if the revenues come in, then we would look to fill those positions at some point in time. And the other thing I want to reiterate to you is this, staff will not make those decisions without board approval. So I'm committing to you that we're going to come back to you if revenues come in better than expected, and again, my expectation is they're going to drop significantly. Let's say they don't drop significantly, then we're still going to come back to you as they start to come in and say, okay, we're going to suggest we go forward with this expenditure or that expenditure, or are you okay with that? And make sure that we have majority favor for that. We're not going to expend any of those funds that I've suggested so far. We're going to wait until we know. Same thing's true for the para pros for the alternative elementary program, not move forward on those positions. Down in number six, one of the uses of CARES stimulus money is devices. And so we can fund the 171,374 through stimulus money, so that can come off of this list since we have an alternative way to fund that. The routing specialist to full-time, that is also a position I want to move forward on because it is routing for special education. It also ensures that when we have a bus accident or the supervisor is out of the office or some kind of emergency like that, we have an office, we have somebody in the office because we run our transportation office from 6:00 AM to approximately 5:00 PM, and we need to make sure that we're staffed there. So that is one that I would move forward on, given your approval of the budget tonight. So I'm being very transparent with you about that. Also want to note that with, with retirements, so what happens in a retirement is typically people that are at higher salary retire, they're replaced with people who have less experience typically, and so there are savings generated there. And so I can assure you that that cost of that upgrade of that position from half to full-time is covered by savings. Another good example is I have a senior staff position in finance and operations, the assistant superintendent. That position's been vacant since December, and so I have savings there to cover that position. The transportation software, if the revenues come in, then I'd like to move forward with that, not until we know and not until you approve. Text management inventory, same thing, we will hold that. First of all, that's not even something that could happen until June of next year or a time when students are not here because of all that has to happen. But again, we would have the revenues, we'd have the authorization to expend those revenues should you decide that's something we could do as a board. I didn't, I did leave the bus lease purchases there. Again, the idea there would be we will not move forward with those purchases until we know we have the revenues. And that one. And that one's a little bit tricky anyway, because with the lease purchase, we have to pay over five years, and so that would increase our operational budget by $250,000, and I don't want to, I don't want to encumber that much in operations, so we're going to hold until we know that the revenues are there, until you approve that. Item 11, increase the division para pro contract day to eight hours. Again, I'm recommending that we, that stay there, because we're going to need that additional support, should schools open on time. However, we would issue contracts to all of our para pros for seven-hour days, not eight-hour days. So basically, this says we would be able to move some to eight-hour days, we'd be authorized for those expenditures, if you approve that, but we are not going to move to put anybody on an eight-hour day until we know our revenue picture and until you approve that. Then down below, under recruit support, retain enthusiastic professionals, we're following suit with other divisions, again, because of the uncertainty in our revenues, we have to commit to salary increases by July 1, so we pulled those back, because you can see the cost of those salary increases, the concern there is if we were to commit to a salary increase, we really need to move forward on that, because we pay over a 12-month period, even for 10-month employees, and so I'm recommending that those, that we not do any salary increases or incentives there. The only thing I'm suggesting that we would keep there would be the increase in the substitute teacher pay. Again, by that being there, should we have the revenue and be able to do that, we would, but that's also something that you could increase the pay, say, January 1st. So in the fall, if revenues, sales tax revenues and lottery revenues are looking good, then that might be something we'd want to do, say, starting in January, but again, not move forward with that higher rate of pay until we know our revenue picture. And then the one thing that is not negotiable is the VRS rate increase, that's required expenditure, $384,210, and again, that is the, that is the amount that the county funded in their revenue increase for us, that was the only thing they funded, and we're glad they did. For a total operational increase of $2,217,330, again noting that the 384 to 10 for VRS, the sped transportation routing specialist, those would be the only two things we would be doing until we know better the revenue picture. So I'm happy to answer any questions, I think that's the last document I had for you, and I'm happy to answer those questions. I guess I'd end by saying that I've never been through a budget like this, you know, we went through the Great Recession, you know, basically, the states said, we're going to cut your revenue X, and then you build a budget around a decrease in revenue, and you laid people off, and you got rid of, you know, your surplus, you riffed, you cut everything you could cut, right to the bare bones. This is different, because the state's saying, we're going to, we're going to have, this is going to be your revenue, but we know it's not correct, we just don't know how incorrect it is yet. So I think it would be unwise to move forward with any of these discretionary expenditures until we know we can. Happy to answer any questions about that. I would say that I did talk to superintendents in Region 5 and Region 4, and we're all following a similar approach with some differences. One of those superintendents has a new school opening and has to furnish it, so they've got some commitments they have to make, so they'll be moving forward for those expenditures. There were no salary increases in those divisions, one division did have a salary initiative, where they were targeting specific parts of the scale, and I think their intention may be to continue to move forward on that, but no raises for all teachers and no raises for any employees, other than those ones that are in those specific ranges on their scale.
Since the state revenue is less, since tax bills locally goes out in June, what's going to happen, and this is theoretical, that the local tax revenue doesn't come in?
Well, the thing about the local tax revenue, and again, I'm not, I'm speaking as a layman, but as a layman, by having, having the majority of your tax revenue be based on property taxes, that's a much more certain source of revenue than, say, sales taxes. So it may very well be the county is fairly insulated from major economic distress because of the pandemic, because it's likely that people will still continue to be able to pay their property taxes, and as you know, that's the majority of funding for the county. Now, they also rely on local sales tax, ours is not just local, ours is statewide tax and a share of local, so we're a little bit protected and insulated there. So for example, if there are parts of the state that have a stronger recovery, then we're less affected than if our locality has a very slow recovery or low recovery, if you know what I mean. So I wouldn't anticipate that's the case, but if it is, then it would be like a drop in state revenue, we would just need to adjust on the fly.
But they have a rainy day fund they could draw on as well, correct?
They do, their fund balance, I want to say, the last time I was in their discussions with them was in the order of, I want to say, $13 million, so they had a pretty good, they had a reserve that was, that matched what they said they should have.
Local taxpayers, if they don't have a job, and I know they got a stimulus check or whatever, and to me, putting food on the table and paying utilities, paying taxes is going to be the last thing on their mind, and even though it's going to be a penalty, I don't know whether the county would consider waiving that, but I, this is serious man, as everyone knows. And if the state doesn't have revenue, the locality is going to be hard for us to get what they're asking taxpayers to pay.
Yeah, the thing to keep in mind, though, too, is, you know, there's discussion right now, again, I'm, this is as a layman, this is not based on any other knowledge, but there are also discussions at the federal level about additional stimulus that would go to states, so that may offset some of that, I don't know. You know, there's been so many unknowns in all this right now.
So the locality is going to get some stimulus money as well?
No.
That's correct, isn't it?
Not right now, what they will, there is discussion at the federal level about additional stimulus, like a package three.
Not on the local level, that's correct, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one of the discussions at one of the Board of Supervisors meetings I watched recently, many people have their taxes in with their mortgage, and so that, they had percentages of that that gets paid for that, so for the immediate term, that might work. Now, if those people can't pay their mortgage, that would be another thing. But unfortunately, it's just really hard to plan for all those eventualities. Anything else on the adjustments to the budget, which we will revisit later under action?
He said, Ms. Walsh, oh, I'm sorry, that's Ms. Wetzel.
All right, hearing none, we'll move-
I think Walsh was trying to say something, but she muted.
For some reason, a box comes up in front of Ms. Walsh, and I can't see her.
Yeah, she unmuted.
Okay. There she comes, she, her microphone turned green.
She's frozen.
And I tried my best to get this box away from her face, but I couldn't.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, sorry about that, there's nobody here, so I don't know who's taking the bandwidth, but-
Is it that dog?
Yeah. So, just as a point of clarification, and this really helped me to understand it, basically what we're doing is an authorization to expend these funds at some point in the future, but we have to wait for the actual appropriation to come through.
Correct.
And at this time, at this time, the only two things that will be funded are number seven, because we can do that with savings, and number 17, because the county's going to fund the VRS rate.
That's correct, and we have no choice in the VRS.
Right, okay, thank you.
And then expenditure of anything beyond that, depending on our money, will come back to the board with Dr. Johnston's recommendations and priorities, and then we can have a conversation about that prior to enacting any of that.
Correct.
All right, hearing nothing else right now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented, Ms. Michelle Manning.
Is there a second?
I don't, that's not on this agenda.
Um, yes. What we did, Ms. Walsh, is we, remember when we met-
Oh, I see, okay.
We put them, we put the two together.
Right, 4-1 and 4-2, I see, thank you. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Manning and seconded by Ms. Walsh, that we approve the consent agenda, and you will notice there are two different, there's a resolution and a request on there. Dr. Johnston, did you want to say anything about either of those?
Yeah, the resolution, with the emergency enactment of the government, emergency declaration from the governor, there were a number of waivers that had been issued by the legislature in policy, in federal education law, the ESA Act, and so on and so on, and so, and rather than to change all of our policies in a temporary way, what this resolution does is it says that if any of our policies are in conflict with the emergency order waivers and such, that our policies are waived. So it just protects us, if, for example, this year, the way we awarded locally verified credits for seniors, that changed because kids did not take SOL tests. So basically, that just protects us so we don't have to keep bringing things to the board, it just says that if we have a policy that's in conflict with the waivers, then our policy is waived. The reappropriation of the fund balance, I talked about that earlier, that's requesting reappropriation of our special budgets, I reviewed that for you, because we still have funds in those for the fiscal year, and that simply allows them to carry over into the next fiscal year. And then the other is asking that the 220,666 be reallocated for capital improvement.
Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the two items in the consent agenda? Hearing none, it's been properly moved and seconded, that we approve the consent agenda with the resolution and the request for reappropriation. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Helsley?
Yes.
Ms. Wetzel?
Yes. Thank you. Our next, our next item is the action item, and it is the final adoption of the 2020-21 budget. Is there a motion to adopt the 2020-21 budget as we just discussed earlier?
I move we adopt the budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Shelby Klein, I'm second.
Okay, it was moved by Ms. Manning and seconded by either Mr. Helsley or Ms. Klein to-
I agree with Ms. Klein.
Okay, Ms. Klein is seconded by Ms. Klein, to approve, to adopt the budget as presented and discussed. Any other discussion, last chance discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Helsley?
Yes.
Mrs. Wetzel?
Yes. The budget is adopted. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have board member comments, and I think to facilitate this, I'll just go down the list, if you have a comment, you can make it, if you don't, you can pass, and I'll start with Mr. Helsley.
Uh, yes, I have a few things. First of all, I'm so pleased about the number of meals being served, the food service, and Ms. Polk, X an article in the paper on her, and, and I think Michelle was instrumental in getting those numbers up, and she should be commended, and all the workers in Ms. Polk's department, so we've done a great job on that. The one thing I've heard about, about the lights on the football fields, Dr. Johnston, you made that as an executive decision, I think the board members should have had some say into that. And the more I read about the articles of spring athletes that did not get to participate their senior year, your heart goes out for them. They trained for three and a half years, they were looking for a successful season, and it was terminated, not by their choice, but by the virus. And what little money it costs for them to get some recognition one week, it was by the Bull Run District, their athletic directors, I thought was the small tribute that we could have accomplished them. So I was really disappointed in that, that we didn't have a say, but now, since the seniors are coming to an end with graduation, and I think that could be, but anyway, on the graduation issue, your staff, Dr. Johnston, should be commended, that we're getting something that I think everyone in the community, from Stralsburg, Central, and Stonewall, will be very appreciative under their circumstances, considering most people are not doing it that way. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Helsley. Ms. Walsh?
I wanted to just thank Dr. Johnston and his staff at the school board office for staying on top of these numbers as they keep changing, and also just all of the different guidelines that are coming out, making sure that we're aware of them, but also just monitoring them for us, so it's easy for us to navigate. And like Mr. Helsley said, I really do appreciate, especially the principals at the high school, for coming up with really good plans for graduation, and I know, I know that the principals' hearts were really in trying to do something special for the seniors, and I really appreciate that they were able to come up with something that works, and I think, I think they will all have some kind of celebration together, whenever anybody can get together, whether it's at Thanksgiving or whenever, but I'm really glad they're going to have their graduation ceremonies. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Ms. Manning?
Yes, just wanted to say, Marty, I appreciate the recognition, but I really think it was the USDA lifting the requirement for children to be prepped that really bumped our numbers up for meal service. You know, that allowed people to pick up for other families, and I do know that some of our teachers in the SEA and a few others have really been instrumental in delivering food to the families that just couldn't get there and were really in need, so that's been a great addition, those two implementations. Just reiterating what everyone's saying, I don't disagree with Mr. Helsley about the lights, but been there, it's over, it's, we're moving on. Graduation is, I think, such a great idea and being able to honor our seniors. When I shared the Northern Virginia Daily story on my Facebook page, I had a lot of friends, mostly our neighbors to the east of us in much larger counties, who most of the comments were, we're so jealous because their graduates are not getting that in-person experience. So commend our little spot here in the world for doing that. That's all.
Thanks, Ms. Manning. Ms. Klein?
Sure. I wanted to thank the parents of Stralsburg High School, Toms Brook Volunteer Fire Department, Stralsburg Fire Department, Stralsburg Rescue Squad for helping to shine the lights on Glen Proctor Field over at Ram Stadium last week for the Be the Light Bull Run District. And, you know, I know it's tough times, and thank you to the parents for understanding that the school board really wasn't in a position to fund this through our budget this year as we have a shortfall of money coming in from the state of Virginia sales taxes that pay our utilities. My dad and I had the privilege today to drive by Central High School as he had a medical appointment, and, you know, none of us ever expected to have to honor our seniors in unique ways, but the yard signs with full-color photos of the seniors and the inspiring quotes to send them off when they have their graduation next week really did make my heart full. It was really neat to see those. Dr. Johnson, I'd like to thank you and your administrative staff for working on the budget. As Cindy said, you know, numbers are coming in different and changing all the time. Thanks to our food service workers for their continued dedication to helping to feed our students. You know, our numbers are slowly creeping upwards, and that's what we want to see. Thanks to our nurses this week and Nurse Appreciation Day, and of course, our teachers who have worked tirelessly to still teach our students in ways that we never thought we would ever have to do. Your work is, I think the American public is realizing how hard a teacher's job really truly is. So thanks to our teachers for all that they're doing, and our administrators as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Mr. Keller?
Am I last?
No, I'll be, I'll go last.
Well, you're last. Okay, well, then I would certainly echo what the previous board members have said. I do want to commend the school board office staff for just kind of holding things together during a difficult time. And as I've said, you know, we're going to make mistakes along the way, but I think if we, we kind of focus everything on what's best for kids, then, then we should have no trepidation there. So you continue to do that. I know the budget is tough to do, and we're kind of making up pretense numbers, but we need to go on with that as well. I would also say that, as Ms. Klein had noted at Central, I rode down Ram Drive yesterday, and I saw the pictures of the two thousand, or twenty-twenty graduates. And it is, it's good to see, and I appreciate the administration of Stralsburg High School taking that on. And I think that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. And I'd like to say, I miss seeing you in person. I'm going to be eating these dark chocolate hazelnut. I'll eat one for each of you. I'd like to give a special shout-out to our technology department. Tim Taylor, Doug Koller, they've worked with me individually sometimes, even before meetings. And Josh Reinhardt, who's now with us, who does the live streaming part. And to Ms. Heichman and Ms. Rittenhour for their bearing with us all in the meeting. And thank you all. This has been an experience, and we'll try it again next week, I guess. So hearing nothing else, I think we will adjourn at five sixteen PM. Thank you all very much.
See you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.